No, it's two or three there. What was it, uh? Man, I'm just gonna work.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep.
There you go.
What better than metal bands?
Well, honey?
Should've been up to that first one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I wish my son was at your game cellar.
That was in New York. That sure looked like a political salad.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, yeah. Even the SkyBalls is working.
Not that safe, but the parking layout is still, it's not a worth of progress.
They didn't work. They sold that parking area right in, you know, that little side right behind the urban station? They sold that to for a motel.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Who owned that?
City of Dallas.
Motion property.
Yeah.
Those across that bought that, but I mean, an individual bought the that parking lot to go and put more jetty.
Hey, he did that with a man.
I don't know, traffic engineers kind of low it. They're both a big thing in the Nassau, Virginia, like close 25,000 semi-outdoor, semi-inboard.
Yeah.
And, uh, I mean Jimmy Crawford, I mean, and crowded concerts, it'd take three hours to get out.
Yeah.
Did you ever go to the old place?
Ready? We're going by this block.
Wow. Know where the Pacers used to play new minutes?
I don't think so.
Because that's the line itself.
Not 5:57? We call this meeting to order, who stands with my people, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What? Well, we probably should have. All right, welcome, everybody. Hopefully, we'll be short and sweet and out of here. First thing on the list is the Selectments Meeting Minutes from June 18, 2014. Has everybody had an opportunity to go through them?
No.
Any corrections or additions that need to be made? I did not see any. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as we?
Make a motion to accept the minutes, please.
Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor? All right. And we have a guest. Cindy, you're a guest, Cindy Grant.
My question is, is we haven't had an audit in the Town Report since 2009. And my question was, is to ask the auditor if it's possible to get it in time to go into the Town Report? And if there's anything that we need to do to make it happen? Because it is the law that certain excerpts from that audit be in the Town Report and published to the public.
So, okay. And you spoke to the auditor today.
Yeah, I talked to Jerry Black, and there's a lot of things that to be considered. One, the timeframe of when we close our book to when our annual meeting is. I think Stephanie and I talked about it back a while ago. It's such a short time in between, that of course is no excuse, but we have to allow for like the printers. We eliminate one week for just a printer, preparing for the report. Not a lot of our statements come in until like almost the end of February. I talked to her, we could, we can get it done, but it's gonna be a huge commitment on myself and the auditor to work almost every day for at least a couple of weeks. So that kind of leaves, you know, us here in the office at that time, we're preparing for our annual report, that whole book. So, there's a lot of things. I mean, it can be done, it's not an issue.
What is, what's the difference then? I mean, what's your preparation time look like now when we do the report? Like last year?
We're working on just the report itself, annual book, almost a month until the week goes.
You and her?
Kathy.
Oh, you, okay.
For the book, but Jerry and I, I worked throughout the whole month with her.
So this would condense that amount of time that you would have to do to get that done?
Yeah. We did talk about moving our annual meeting, April, the third week in April would be perfect. It would allow her almost a full month to prepare. So, but I think that's quite a process. I think that the legislative body has to deal with that because they approved the annual meeting this far.
What does that look like? I don't know, like, it's always been in March, and a lot of towns have it unless they change their fiscal year.
Right.
Why is March the?
I don't know.
Magic time. You know Cindy or Paula? Paula might know.
I don't know that one. I, I can tell you that most towns have changed to a June year end.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they can be in compliance, because they can have their town meeting in March. They can approve their budget for the next year, and they can be in compliance with an audit because the audit is from the last fiscal year, which would be the previous June. That's what they're doing to get by it.
So they have an audit from the part of the?
It's the June 30th of the previous year.
Yeah.
And you're actually having your town meeting prior to the end of your next year, which would be June. And that's what, that's what they're doing too. Because it is, it is a short turnaround. I've gone through it every, I've only worked in one town, but I have June year end, and it's tight.
Yeah, I year doesn't close until January.
Correct, right, correct. So it only lasts a couple of weeks to really work with.
So it's six weeks between the time and the time of a town meeting.
And I know that in 2009, I believe it was, was the first year she didn't, or we didn't get the audit in time to get it printed, but it was here for the meeting, and we have that available.
There's a lot of new regulations that the auditors have to go from now, that they didn't have to do before that time. So it's, it makes a lot more work for them to comply with all the things that they.
Maybe, maybe just pushing, maybe doing just the warrant for town meeting and then publishing the town report later. Having it available at town meeting. You only need the town report three days, is it?
Yeah, three days.
Three days prior to the meeting, which we're cutting it post for that when we get our reports.
We meet that deadline for three days.
I mean, they used to do it. I don't know what they, they, what's happened that they, you know, that they, they, the deadline is set because it's been right up until 2009, it wasn't. And I didn't, I just was wondering if there's something that the town can do to help the auditors to make it happen.
Well, it's just a lot of dedication on our part, too. And hopefully, everything, all our reports get here someday, and that stuff.
Well, when you're looking at like four to five weeks from the end of January until, that's gotta be done. Basically, five weeks. You've still got, there may be some reports that only come four weeks or whatever, that you don't, I mean, you don't have all the information you need to complete that by the time.
Well, I think at any rate, it behooves us to make that our objective, is to have it in the town report.
Because I know on my part, we close on the 31st, and I have everything ready.
Right.
From trio, goes to her, and then other things, like I just said, statements and stuff. I can't help that, you know?
Didn't you talk to MMA about what is necessary or what should?
Yeah.
Should we begin?
Well, in the report, they get an asset.
Is it necessary, no, to have the complete?
No.
To have the complete?
In the I file, it's treasure, like our liabilities and assets and stuff, and that's part of it. Our balances, all of that's put in the book, so technically, that's what.
They say as long as we have a completed one for the year before, that we're compliant with the law.
And that's what Mr. Stoltz told me as well.
But the law says it has to be as of your last fiscal year, which, when you publish the report, your last fiscal year would be previous January. That's where the issue is. Put in January, in the one that we just did, put in the January of the previous year, you wouldn't be in compliance with the law. You have to put it.
As we would be compliant with the law in our year, not the, not the fiscal year, but our whole year, our fiscal year.
But it's a fiscal year.
I mean, the corporation doesn't, all corporate entities don't all have a January 1 to be some of the 31st year. I mean, if that's what it is, then you have to have that from the year before. But if your year is January through January, it would be January. Are we good?
I'm here. Have you guys considered changing the year end? Well, I think it's been talked about, but it's, I mean, I think that would be a commitment. We gotta go on investigation. I talked to some towns that have done it. Well, to let you know that this town, they're not gonna have to tax the town for school. And can we tax for that? Yeah, we didn't think that you guys collected the heaven.
I think it'd be easier to move the town meeting. Right, I did too. Less confusion. And if we need a vote, can't we put it on November's ballot? Right. Yeah, I don't know what the rules are. Yeah, we can get it all set up for next year, and you'll have an extra month. The only thing that I'm concerned about, though, is that if we did move it to April, we didn't receive this preliminary report until May 16th, and. I think it would, because I think the town's been so not lazy, I'm not, I don't wanna use that word, but haven't, they haven't enforced it, so. Like with the auditor? So there was no like date set in? No enforcement, okay.
I think of the law was the expectation that when it could happen, that we start, like we found this issue, where is it, where is?
Is there like an engagement letter that you submit to her when you're ready to do an audit? No, at the end, we give that letter. Right, yeah, no, the engagement letter would be before the audit is placed to tell her like, you know, this is what we want you to do, and this is when we want it to buy. That's maybe a good idea to just write that down for her to know what our deadline is, and hopefully she. And she certainly, I mean, even for the March meeting, we can work really hard. That does seem like a short window, you know? I would, I would think that just moving it the leading month would give everybody time. Well, not only that, it allows me to help Kathy with the book. There's a lot of reports I have to do, and just collecting all that data for her, you know, and typing it. So there is a lot of work for that book.
Does somebody want to make a motion? For something?
And I can check with MMA too regarding moving our meeting.
Yeah, because we can do that, yeah.
That's what I was gonna, the motion is to table these questions about the audit report until our next meeting, and to check with MMA about changing our meeting, our town meeting date, maybe to April. Is that something we can put on the November ballot? Yeah. And then also making sure with the auditor, we do put down our expectations for her. If we haven't, definitely, that's something we should be doing. That's my motion.
So that'll be then. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, anything else, Cindy?
No.
All right, Planning Board, report minutes.
We didn't have meetings.
Okay. And Board of Appeals, report minutes, none. Executive Session, none. CEO, Rick, you're on.
Do you have my report?
I do. Would you like to explain?
Well, for the violation, weren't you?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Story has it that Rena has hate.
Okay.
We're still, we don't have anything in writing yet, but truth, so it's still holding off. Hopefully, it is true, and that will be the end of that, except she'll still be on a five-year contract. And the other violation, all the paperwork that's next to the court, we'll wait for the court to come pick him up.
And his, his obligation was to pick it up and be off the premises, or just have it picked up?
He and all his stuff, he and himself, has to be gone by June 30th, if it's a small problem.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion, we accept Paul, Carla's report and paper on it. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor? How's Ms. Carla doing? Does anybody want to hear?
That first one makes me ill.
What? Why did we put that on? Ooh! Oh, yeah, we heard about that, yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion, we pay, we accept Paula, Carla's report and paper on it. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor? Is there any way to find who did that? I think that should, could show up totally well. Okay, getting to fire, you have your report that's in motion. And SAD, Scott.
Hi, everyone.
School Board Report, we have 39 trees we just assassinated.
I'm telling you, it's kind of busy a few months, that's for sure.
I'm sure.
Well, folks, I'm gonna thank you, everything over there. I just wanted to report that I will be on the Budget Committee also. We plan to meet tomorrow. We, as you've seen, the paperwork that was provided to you was a report of adopted, of an adopted budget. The only thing that hasn't been clarified yet would be the administrator's salary and his decision whether to have resignation or, and we think, we believe that's the destination that's going to be happening.
Who was that?
David Anderson.
Anderson, okay, yeah.
We had some, just as a note, we had some issues with, in our meetings, with the fact that there is a double salary, including one as principal and one as the administrator. Therefore, we're looking into hiring another specific administrator and going with that right now. So at this point, it's in the works. Some of the other things that we've, well, like I said, everything there is, hasn't been, has been adopted so far. One, some of the concerns that we had were, one specifically relating to Clifton is, a lot of the teachers are being shifted into different schools because of the cuts that had been made. And, you know, there's been concerns with that, especially with the specialized positions that have been filled. Two of them have been filled by ed techs. And we believe that a specific special education, certified special education teacher should be in those positions rather than having a ed tech, which, you know, doesn't make too much sense to me. I don't know if it does to anyone else, but, you know, that's another thing. The other thing that we had, again, that was adopted, that we, unfortunately, it's just my opinion, but unfortunately, it happens to be that it was what the majority voted. I'll just give you an example. We have the principal salaries in Eddington, 71, seven plus. Holbrook, 78,000 plus, and Holden, 79,000 plus. That's kind of, that's, well, not a bad salary. I mean, in this area, and what, you know, where we, where we are, but there's, there's a freeze for the first year, and it's contingent on a 2% raise for the three positions. Like I said, the superintendent, who is also a principal, is up on the, kind of the block for the next round to see how we're gonna, you know, decide on what we're gonna do, so that's that. They're currently still looking into an audit for, I know it's still. I clarified too, that, you know, you know, about Clifton and the rights and, you know, the things that, you know, are important to us, that, you know, as we even spoke about, that Clifton's one of, maybe the lowest, but it's the first one to make the payment, you know, so that was, that was brought out. As far as the tension that's needed to be brought to Clifton and the students and their, their rights to, you know, we shift to different schools and, you know, this and that, and those are the things that are going on. And even though there were a lot of cuts, we had a lot of problems with, again, specifically, the principal salaries, and then where does that leave the teachers? You know, you're knocking teachers off, but, you know, you, it's just, you know, something that's almost insane, even though, you know, you've got increases in students every year. It's just, I, you know, they've got students in these classes that are up to 25, you know, and plus in some cases. So that's kind of high, as I, as I say. Other than that, with the adoptions, we have a meeting tomorrow night. I have, I have something here that's, we wanted to ask, and that's for anybody that wanted to be on, an ad hoc committee for transportation staffing and long-range planning. There's a meeting in, yeah, at the end of August to form a subcommittee. And we'd like to have people volunteer if they could. I'll put up some, I'll put something together, and maybe we can, you know, get that out to someone who might be interested. That's gonna be, like I said, in August at some point, so we'll have that put out really quick. Other than that, I think that's just about it. Anything further, I think what I can do is, you know, I could, I could post information readily available, and, you know, my site, if there's any questions or, you know, whatever's, you know, practical, I suppose, that's okay.
Do you have a blog?
I do not.
Rusty had one.
Oh, yeah, Rusty's got a lot of stuff. She's on the baller.
She is, very much.
I have to give her credit for the amount of work that she does. You know, this is volunteer work that she's not getting paid for, not numbers, but, you know, I believe that she's got a fair concern about Clifton residents too and the kids. And she, she always addresses the needs of children here in Clifton and Eddington. She represents Eddington, of course, but, and you gotta, you kind of get passed over because, you know, it's what it is. But we've already had a couple of board members that have retired. And so, you know, kind of getting on, you know, the weighted side at this point, I suppose. You know, that's a good thing, you know, but, you know, like I said, the salaries are, you know, frozen after this year, and, and they're going up, going up again. Like I said, I think a lot of them, including maintenance, you know, a few of them were roughly 2% increase after the first year or two. And I guess a lot of that is, the information is on the budget report, so.
What is the average class size?
The average by sizes are anywhere from 19 to 25. Our concern was, of course, the special ed department, where, you know, there's definitely a need in that area when you have somebody that's teaching as an ed tech, who's not technically certified as a special education teacher, and they're putting them in there. The decision was made pretty much premature by the superintendent, and we're kind of against that. Class sizes are another thing. We've had some off some, some teachers because of the budget, but we've got an issue with, again, these salaries that I just spoke out about, and which are, in my opinion, again, are substantially high, where I believe that they should be going towards the teachers. And, you know, a lot of this transportation, this is a big deal too, because, you know, one of the things that are, you know, concerning are that, you know, that the children from Clifton are being shuffled and split up. You know, we have, we have a child that's been in second, first, second, third grade. All of a sudden, it's developed friendships and, you know, kinship to their other friends. It's all of a sudden shifted into another school, so, you know, it's, that was a concern too. And, you know, the waiting time on the bus is, you know, a bunch of different things, but, you know, class size is, is an important key. You know, by lessening the amount of teachers, obviously, depending, I forget what the growth rate or growth adolescent is or, you know, for student-teacher ratio, you know, it's going up a little bit. More students to.
It's about 22, there's roughly.
Okay, Jess?
Well, I, I just was hoping for a couple of clarifications. Next year, when they, when they separate the grades into separate schools?
Yes.
That is to cut teachers, correct?
Yes.
And to make class sizes more stable? Because some schools, like if they didn't, they could be a 15 classroom at Eddington, and then a 25 classroom at Holden, so that's why they're combining the grades.
That's correct. It's, and again, there's been shifting of some teachers too, from Holden to Holbrook and so on and so forth.
So what I've, what I've gathered for the past couple of months is that's not a bad thing.
On paper, it's not bad. When it, when it takes its place and its course, I guess you're gonna have to see at that point what happens. And if it was a, if it works out to that, it is good. I mean, that's something throughout the year too, that if a plan that's been adopted, all of a sudden, it's having some problems. I mean, obviously, there's gonna be, be some things that have to be adjusted, I guess.
I'm just thinking that second grader that you was talking about, who had already made friends in the second grade. All those second graders are going to be together.
Primarily, yeah.
I thought that was, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
As far as my, my knowledge at this point, from what I've been told at board meetings and through the last board meeting.
The option of taking the Clifton kids by themselves and moving to Holden has been asked?
Yes.
Okay. Then I think we're all set there. The superintendent?
Yes.
Slash principal?
Yes.
That position was created to save money?
Correct.
So now we're going, he's going to resign, his superintendent, and stay principal?
The decision to resign hasn't been fully accepted at this point.
Okay.
What we have met at the last board meeting was initially his specific salary as a principal and the administration position. We were told on a few occasions that he just pretty much had enough, and he was going to be resigned. But then it changed all of a sudden, now he is deciding that he doesn't know.
Okay.
And what we're saying is, you're not gonna wait till the last minute to say, here I am, I'm gone, without having a backup, I guess.
So has there been, has there been discussions of, because of what he gets paid as superintendent? That is what is upsetting people?
The double salary, the both, both positions and the amount.
But, let's play an example. If he stays principal and we hire a superintendent, are we going to be spending more?
Yes.
So.
Oh, no, 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 if we hire another superintendent, no.
We wouldn't.
No.
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 That would be news to me. And then the ed tech positions?
Yes.
I do not believe we are illegal. I think those ed tech positions were filled with ed techs instead of special ed teachers to save money.
Correct. Our position as of saving money, however, isn't giving the students a certified.
But there is teachers, we do have special ed teachers.
That's correct. But again, it doesn't give them a certified teacher to, to fill that position, they're ed techs.
Right, but they're not teaching, they're, they answer to the teachers.
That's correct, but there's still the positions that are needed for the special education.
So are they illegal right now? Are we illegal right now?
It's not illegal, no.
Okay.
But it also doesn't justify the fact that the students need the certified special education teacher to meet their needs.
But we're not illegal.
No, we're not illegal, no.
Okay.
All right. Do you have the board members' report?
No.
Please do. All right, thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
I certainly appreciate your diligence and efforts.
Thank you.
All right, Treasuries Report.
Yeah, my monthly reports. And then we have, just came in from Mark Gibson, our tax commitment, I guess, have in front of you, which a lot of our tax school, which is part of this tax. So he has a little.
Yeah, his letter here says, hi, Dan, this is your 2014 tax rate calculation form. I used the same mill rate as last year and came within $1,000 of last year's overlay. You should check this out, find any discrepancies, let me know if you want changes.
Did you find any discrepancies? All these had, I've not had, but they're all accurate. County tax, appropriations, we have no tip financing, local education, all those are accurate. Total valuation, which he has out there. And Homestead, he has all of those calculations. And what was our mill rate last year? 12.60. Yeah, it sounds, recommend the same, say the same. Our overlay is down from last year.
Last year was over 15.
15.
Yeah, yeah. And this year, he's open at 14, 369, 12.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'll make the motion, we set our mill rate at 12.6.
Second motion. Any discussion?
And then?
Okay, all those in favor?
So next will come the certification you guys have signed.
Yep.
With the books prepared, bills, moving the tax bills ready. Fourth one, send them out before again, which didn't cost a whole lot, not very much. Fifteen dollars, or something like that.
And we notify that and we all come in and sign or that we voted on the vote? Okay.
All right. So we have the dates committed, when they'll, everything will go out.
Yep.
Correct. As we, in the past. The school amount is part of that commitment, so I don't, you guys can look at that. Letter to the residents on, this is an issue we had from last month. Okay, just, that's just informational, that's what went out, here I'm signed in.
I've heard it was a little better, is that correct?
Yes, yeah. I've talked to the two residents that were concerned and so far, everything's good.
Okay, okay.
I mean, what it definitely tried.
Yeah.
Yeah. Leave their stuff, yeah.
I would over there.
Yeah.
Girls are picking it apart.
Yeah. And then, a letter from MMA regarding estimates for our buildings. Apparently, our valuation assessment went up, blew it on our buildings. So we need to increase our, our insurance.
Now, their insurance through MMA?
The, the building.
Yeah. Yeah, the building.
So, yeah, who we asked for.
Yeah, the Marshall and Swift is a program, you plug in the square footage of your buildings and it comes up with a replacement value. Usually pretty accurate.
So it's just five percent higher, the insured value, so a little bit higher.
So they're going to make the increase on, or have they made it already?
They'll make it effective till I first.
Okay. So what do we need to do with that?
Normally, unlike homeowners policy, that will go up every year anyway, but maybe these ones are different. They don't go up every year.
Oh, okay.
All right, okay. Then I did have a little agenda, you guys have a copy of the letter from the Federal Transportation Local Road Assistance Program. It lets us know what we're going to receive from, for July one, twenty-fourteen through December, thirteen thousand two hundred. And I have to do a report, I have to estimate what we spent out on our roads, capital road improvements. These are my calculations. And we come up, we have to come up higher than what they're going to give us. And we came out at twenty-nine thousand total for our last year's capital improvement. So we need that again, so that'll be some help for us.
Okay.
Recycling continues. Carol, with an eye, we've both been talking to JT, John Taylor. And you can take some here.
Okay, so newest events in the last week or so. I had had two or three discussions with Jim Carr about the recycling in Bangor closing as of the end of June. And I had also talked to Jim at length one day when he came in here and I was a little concerned about his medical condition at the time. His health has not been well. And he was having a very difficult time speaking, so I questioned him and did a little assessment at the same time. But in the course of that, I just asked him that, he told me that he was having a difficult time taking the stuff into Bangor to the recycling center. Because when you get there, they expect you to unload all of that stuff, which he was, he's going to be eighty this year. And the bins that the magazines and papers come in are hugely heavy, as are, as is everything else. So we had that discussion. I asked him to please not go alone unless he had somebody go with him to help him unload. And Ed graciously accepted that and he told me that he would call Ed. So after July one, he took in a load of cardboard and of course, there was no place to take it. So he became quite upset and had a couple of visits in here to the office and said that he was all done, nobody told him anything, this town doesn't know, whatever. I'm just kind of repeating of what I've heard. But long and short of it is that he has given up his position. So, at the heels of that, our recycle center was open last week and Zach kept it open. So now we have to look and work towards making a decision about what we're going to do. So JT, at our last meeting, had offered to help us because he's known Jim for quite some time. And he offered to help Jim take stuff to wherever they needed to go, to, like all the stuff that's in the shed out there. And so we had been looking into that. Cindy brought to our attention EconoMaine, which is a no sort recycle group. And I've tried to call somebody down there today, the person that Cindy gave me the name of, I couldn't get in touch with her. But I did read the brochures and the stuff that they gave us. So that's an avenue. On the other avenue is JT, who offered to work with us within our recycle budget right now for what we've appropriated for Jim and Zach's salaries or whatever, to keep it open every, a couple of times a month, to do what's there and then also to truck the stuff to probably Dexter. That's what he primarily uses. And the only reason is, of the one that Deb gave us was Hancock. Hancock, JT tells me, does not have scales. So when you come in with loads of stuff, you have to get weighed, then you have to, going to Hancock, he would have to go get weighed at some other place and pay scale charges. So that's why he goes to Dexter. The hours of availability are much better in Dexter as well. It's five days a week and a half a day on Saturday, Hancock is open only three days. And he takes stuff up there for a lot of his other towns that he services around us with recycle. So he's graciously accepted to do that. So that's one route. The bigger picture is, what are we going to do? The recycle portion of it, I'm told by JT, and he was going to go talk to people in Dexter and if he had time to throw some things together for us tonight, but obviously did not, I didn't hear from him and you didn't either. But he said in 2018, and that was a date that was given us, is that things are going to change as far as Perk is concerned. We don't know if it's going to close, if it's going to change, but he said, it's like everything else, the contracts that Perk has had with a lot of surrounding towns are going to be up. So in that, there are statewide issues with where trash is going to go. Is it a landfill? Where are the incinerators? So a lot of those things are coming forward in the next few years when it closes. So those are the things that we're kind of looking at right now. So I would like to have some conversation from the board and direction of what we want to do.
I think we need quotes, don't we? I mean, before we can even discuss it, we kind of know, kind of know what our options are costing us for, for the different options of recycling. If we're going to go zero sort or if we're going to let JT take it to Dexter. I want to know which, what it's going to cost.
Right, and EconoMaine, I do know from the brochure that I got and other towns have used it. I just learned today that Glenburn's using it. What'd you say, what'd you say Deb is doing? Are they doing?
Zero sort.
Zero sort, so there's two different options. And the EconoMaine is one that they will come put a roll-off dumpster, I don't know how big the thing is, but they, then we have to truck it. They don't do any trucking. So that's why I wanted to talk to her today and see what kind of options. Apparently, this is mostly in the southern part of the state, but now it's kind of coming up here a little bit. And all those municipalities down there have a contract with them, but there are people that also pay, like that are outside of that perimeter where their contract services. So I would like to have a conversation with them. This zero sort, I don't know if that's Gassella or what that is. I don't know what that option looks like.
We have another company, but I can't remember who, what his name is. But I can get Michelle to call Debbie tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Does the Maine Recycling Commission have a list of options for us?
They may, they may.
I would, it's our choice to look.
Is zero sort too?
Whatever.
Gassella, does zero sort.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the other part of that JT brought up, we still have to have somebody on site because what will happen with that zero sort, we're going to end up with hazardous waste in these containers.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's so many different things you have to look at. And I think the main thing, purpose for tonight was to, JT mentioned about doing this for nothing, for free. But to me, that's kind of hogged Hancock, you know, Hancock, but on Dexter. And we looked at what's left in the budget. I know Zach is good with maintaining it on Saturdays. He seemed to be comfortable. I guess we'll talk to him some more about, is paying him for his time to go.
Hey, I think I mentioned table this and get some more advice and talk to JT.
Yeah.
Before you just consider it, half and half or nothing.
But I.
The cheapest way is no longer the best one.
No, no, absolutely.
But I, I would like the board's approval to at least pay JT, or pay Jim for his travel.
Yeah, we don't, we don't.
Would pay for his gas.
True.
We do have.
Has he come in and got stuff?
He supposedly, just called it off.
The issue right now is that that, that building is full. And we have one newspaper magazine bin that's, let's not fall.
The trailers of a disappearing coming back there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So he had agreed to take that, he's going up to Dexter for us. So if we could perhaps make a motion to pay him for that part of it and.
Yeah.
Continue with Zach doing it, if he's willing to do it, then we'll check with him as well for a little bit until we get some more quotes in, because I would like to talk to EconoMaine, I would like to talk to Zero Sort and.
Give us some time, it's, it's still working right now, so.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. No, I agree, I agree.
I know JT has a gentleman that could help Zach.
Yep.
In the meantime as well.
He had, he had somebody there.
Right, we have that money, we budget.
He just said, I still understand that we don't lock the gate. It took me a long time to get that in the head.
Oh.
That we're going to lock the gate. I said, we don't lock the gate, but we don't even have a lock. Well, this girlfriend, white somebody was down there looking at the Hydros lock.
Oh, I.
I said, that's all you do is lock that, we're going to have to go find somebody to unlock.
Yeah.
So I finally caught my slick, I don't do it to the others, but.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, all right.
Yes.
Something I'd like to see you guys look into is, see what kind of money it would cost for a curbside recycling in this town, to see if we might be able to make up some difference in tonnage. Say you go on tonnage, go into park and be able to have a curbside.
Maybe a little more participation.
Yeah. This is a lot, I mean, this is just beginning, we've got a lot to figure out.
So Ed's motion was to table it.
Can we get more information?
To, to pay JT.
Yeah, also pay Trash Man for his services. We shouldn't have people have to work it out.
No.
I'm not just thinking in the interim, we should.
Didn't do it, there's no doubt about it.
Do what we're doing now in a JT transfer and then take the time.
I mean, he doesn't go every week, he just came up and looked at it. He offered to help Jim prior to that, but Jim wanted no part of that, so.
How often do you, were you?
Once a month, usually.
I wish it was the first and it wasn't the last.
Usually depends on what comes in, how much comes in.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I get it, the bill wasn't the first that.
Yeah, this will still be open, they're talking about transforming it.
It's, it's not the new dream you've been talking to me for a couple of years, it's just about that.
Yep, yep, yep.
I'll second Ed's motion. All those in favor?
Yes, I'm sorry. Could I just throw out?
Please.
No, not to help in the short term, just an idea that in the long term, maybe the conversation could be started with Eddington, Holden and look into the possibility in the long term and a lot of preparation and people's thinking of a transfer, a regional transfer station. And, you know, I only suggest that, I know people will be, I mean, it's so convenient to take your bag out to the curb, but in the long term, that might be the way that, it would be easier to handle. If Perk closes, then we have one central location that they're going to be trucking from rather than each town trying to truck to some distant location or solving the problem by themselves.
Yep.
And I would like to suggest that if, if the budget allows, that maybe you could give Jim a couple months' pay.
Yep.